Welcome, everybody, to the May seventeenth Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask that you please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seat. All right, again, welcome to the May seventeenth Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. If you're not here for this meeting, you're in the wrong place. All right, no minutes to accept. First item on the agenda, Harbor Freight Public Hearing for an amended site plan special permit, an ARB review for a retail tenant, Harbor Freight located within the Woodbury Center Shopping Center. Said property is located at twenty-three Center Drive and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two-two-five, block-two, lots-one-dot-one-two. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Hello, board, thank you for your time.
Just a quick introduction, go over the project real quick and then we'll go out to the board.
Matthew Millen from Permit Advisors on behalf of Harbor Freight Tools. The location is twenty-three Center Drive in the Center Shopping Center. We are proposing an incoming Harbor Freight Tools retail store in that space.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this again is a public hearing for Harbor Freight. Notice was published in the paper record on February, wow, Friday, May twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Anybody, small crowd tonight, anybody here wishing to speak on the Harbor Freight application? Don't all get up at once. Second call, Harbor Freight. Third and final call for the Harbor Freight application. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Natalie, I know you have a little memorandum for us.
Okay, there we go. Okay. All right, so we did prepare a memorandum dated May twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Some of the comments are repeated from the prior memo that was issued, and I'm just gonna kind of quickly go through what I think is outstanding, you know, either plan revision required or discussion for the board. We've noted in our memo that although the application appears to comply, a bulk table should be added to the site plan for completeness. With respect to parking, the applicant should provide a tabulation of existing and required parking. And we were offering in our memo to facilitate that, to share the most recent parking analysis that was done, I believe, for Popeyes. And that way, the applicant can kind of just amend those numbers. And really, the amendment would be contingent on whether or not the retail area of the store is changing, which the applicant should confirm. And again, you guys discussed at the last meet, or the applicant's last appearance, whether or not the cart corral would be permitted within a parking stall on the site. And I think you had opined, A, that it would not be permitted. It's still shown that way on the applicant's plans, so that's something that they should, you know, include as a revision. And also, we've recommended in our memo that they discuss where the carts would be stored on-site, if it's gonna be adjacent to the storefront or within the storefront, for you to consider that. So again, just the parking, the parking issue, again, it's gonna be relatively minor, but there is a waiver for the site, so it needs to be, you know, either reaffirmed or amended based on changes due to this application. With respect to the circulation around the proposed loading dock, we noted, and also Colliers noted in their memo, that where there's a dimension, twenty-seven and a half feet, it's actually a little bit more restricted based on bollards that are around the loading dock, so that should be amended on the plan. And in speaking to Phil, you know, before the meeting, because he wasn't able to be here tonight, he just wanted to reiterate for the board that, you know, we think that this plan should be referred to the ESOs, you know, for confirmation that the circulation around that dock would be acceptable. Technically, the dimensions are okay, I think, for both of us, so. We also noted in our memo that due to the existing conditions and like a review of Google Earth imagery, that there is a drainage manhole and roof leaders in the area where the loading dock is going to be constructed. So if there's gonna be a conflict with those utilities, then the plan should really show how they're gonna be relocated or adjusted. You know, and again, I think that's just kind of a cleanup item for the applicant on the plans. You have, or actually, the applicant provided pictures of the relocated fire department connection for you to consider, so the planning board should discuss whether or not that's acceptable, and if it needs to be referred to the ESOs with the circulation around the loading dock, that's fine. We talked about the cart corral already. For completeness for the plans, the area of disturbance should be noted, as well as erosion and sediment control measures. There are existing catch basins in that area that should be protected during construction. The screening of the rooftop equipment. Any additional information for the board to consider whether the screening is adequately, or, I'm sorry, if the equipment is adequately screened. And then the only other thing that I wanted to talk about was for the ARBs, so I think the applicant's new submission really clarified, you know, their intent to make some modifications to the doors and the windows. Additionally, they are proposing to paint the, basically, the back panel for the sign red. And I think that's similar to maybe staples in the center already. I didn't realize that as part of like the last submission, so I just wanted to raise it to the board in case you wanted to see a rendering. But ultimately, the ARB form should be updated to include that information. And then also, they are proposing a banner sign, which I know this applicant is proceeding with signage separately. So, you know, the banner sign and the wall sign, I think, can be reviewed together as part of that separate application unless the board disagrees or the applicant. So that's all I have, as if it's not enough, right?
So, thank you, Natalie, questions for Natalie? All right, so the signage we're gonna, is not gonna get approved as part of this resolution. We're gonna leave that separate. We're gonna, as far as the screening goes, I know when we had Woodbury Fresh in front of us, we didn't actually like the way, we thought the screening drew more attention to the roof than what was previously there.
Are you changing any kind of equipment up on the roof?
The mechanical upgrades, the rooftop units will be upgraded for code compliance and today's industry standards, yeah.
How much different will it be than what's existing?
I believe it's the exact same amount of existing rooftop, our two years. That refer to the plans, but I believe it, I think it's four on the plan, I'll add to review those.
I mean, if there's not a drastic change in it, I'm okay.
Yeah, I would, I know we didn't want to do with the other story because it actually, it like says, hey, look at me, there's a white picket fence on the roof.
We're hiding something.
We're hiding, yeah, there's nothing behind the fake flag. Deliveries, I think we should stay consistent with what we've done and Natalie's recommendations as far as the overnight parking and trailer storage.
Yep.
Make that part of the resolution. Chief Bark signed off, gave his blessing on the relocated FDC, so that's been addressed. Any thanks for that.
What about the car corral?
We said no to the car corral.
That was actually something I was going to discuss with the board possibly a little bit further. The parking calculations, we did provide those on the updated plans that were sent over. I know that the date was not correct, you called that out. But there were additional, I believe it was eleven-hundred-and-seventy-four spaces were required for the plaza, or for our space, and we were technically using a hundred, or ten-sixty. So we technically had an additional hundred and four spaces.
Yeah, so I think if I recall correctly, your parking calculations were based entirely on the whole center being retail. Actually, there's a lot of restaurants and the parking calculations differ for that. So what I had suggested to the board is, for another recent application, Popeyes went through a comprehensive review for what would be required for the whole center. So you can kind of update your parking calculations based on just your space using those numbers.
So the architect, they did, or design team, they did work with, I think it's SOFFES, you said? For the parking?
No, Popeyes was the last application before the board that they considered.
Maybe Mel, the landlord, had given us, but the parking analysis, our design team put that parking analysis together with the report that they had provided from their most recent survey for that.
Okay, well, we can review that again, but I'm pretty sure that, again, I think that the way the parking.
I understand what you're saying, with the multiples, zones for like the food and everything like that, I understand that, so.
So I think the best way to kind of proceed is for us to give you that information, you know, again, what the board had approved for that last application, so you can kind of work off of that and make any adjustments that are necessary.
I think, like you said, I think that the retail classification was used, specifically not with the restaurants as well.
Right, so it sort of results in a discrepancy in what's actually required for the site.
With that being said, would the board be amenable to us keeping that cart corral there since we would have, it would appear that we would have the sufficient space depending on the additional calculations that are being?
I think the board's worried about the parking with the car corral, I think it's the actual.
It's the car corral itself.
It's the car corral itself.
We've started down on other applicants in there.
Okay.
They haven't let anybody have one in there.
Understood, then, we would remove the cart corral then, and we would still keep the operations plan, one, every one to two hours as presented, for the cart collection from the park.
That's fine with me. And we'll make that a condition of the resolution as well, okay? Thank you.
For the applicant?
Update the plans to?
Yes, that certainly, but also for the board to consider, would you imagine that those carts would then be inside of the store where it would be, you know?
Yes, they would be brought directly back inside.
Because if there was gonna be a change in the structure built outside of, say, the storefront, then that would be?
No, it is, no, no, correct, yes.
Any other questions, concerns, feedback?
When you're talking about retail versus restaurant, the parking lot for Fridays is kind of considered a separate parking lot?
No, it's all one.
Yeah, for the whole center.
The whole center is one parking lot.
Okay, but it's a separate entrance into?
Yeah, but it's one site, it's one, it's considered one site plan, so it's one shared parking.
So Friday's already been rolled into the calculation?
Yeah, we did that when we did Popeyes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the Popeyes one is the most up-to-date considering changes from Woodbury Fresh, because I know that there were parking stalls lost due to the construction of the loading dock at the rear of that tenant's base, as well as the renovations at Popeyes. So that'll be when Harbor Freight updates that. And again, I think it's, there may be no changes because if the existing floor area or the retail area of the store isn't changing, then the park, it's a swap, you know? And then if the car corral can't be in the stall, then they're not losing any spaces. So it's gonna be more of an exercise to have a complete site plan, I think.
It's more just reconfirming that the waiver that's currently in place is still valid. Because I think what we do, two percent?
Two percent, I think, is where we landed, yep.
So it's really just reconfirming the calculations that the last time we granted a two percent parking waiver, so, just to make sure.
Thank you.
Any other feedback or questions or anything?
Good.
All right, I'm gonna, I think we're, I mean, applicant has some homework to do, but I think it could all be done with the submission, and I'm gonna authorize counsel to draft the, draft the draft resolution of approval. I'm making a motion, there you go.
I'm seconding.
All right, any questions? All in fa- Natalie wants to join in the fray.
No, not now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so it's really, whenever you do your homework and get the information back to Natalie, and that she can confirm it, then we can put you on to finish the application out.
Okay, I, could I, I'm gonna have it ready probably by Monday. Could I be placed on the next available board meeting that we would have available?
If you get it in by Monday and Natalie has time to go over it, then yes.
Okay, so we don't have to wait the thirty days like last time?
No, that was because we were waiting for a Gmail referral to come back.
Very well, thanks.
So this is, this is now, actually, all dependent on you now.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you, board, have a great.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda, Hapstank, eight Laurel Lane. Review additional documents received for proposed site plan and special permit for change of use to an indoor commercial recreation facility. Said property is located at eight Laurel Lane in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury's Tax Map, section two-two-six, block-one, lot-twenty-four, dot-two. Good evening, sir.
How are you tonight?
Yourself?
Doing well. I'm John Petrosini, the engineer for the application. We do have some updates for you since our last discussions and the last submittal. We've had several punch list items from the engineer as the items that needed to take place, one of which was installing the water main and fire hydrant. That is near completion, the owner has been working with the water department. The hydrant and water main have been installed, and they're in the process of doing the final testing at this point. So that item is near completion. We've had requests for a certification on the rain garden at the site. I had inspected it, there were a few items that I thought were deficient from what was approved. So the applicant has addressed those, work is now complete. So we will have a report shortly for you indicating that that is up to par. There were some comments on the easement that we had provided. It was requested that we provide an easement over our portion of Laurel Lane. We did indicate on the current submittal to do exactly that. Your highway department saw that there were a few features they wanted included that were outside the bounds of that road. We have no problem with that, whatever access they need, we're happy to keep playing with those lines until it gets them what they want. I believe those are our substantial site plan issues, am I missing any?
Well, I'm gonna talk to the board about the water and also the DEC cleanup that you.
Okay. Yes, we do have, there was a request for the DEC report. We do have it. And I'll be honest, the only reason I didn't submit it, I have a double-page document, ninety pages long. Making fifteen copies of it seemed excessive, but if you want it, no problem. If you are okay with it, I'll give you one copy for your file and one copy for your engineer.
Do you have it in PDF?
Sure.
Well, we can take it like that, you don't have to.
That would be fine.
We'll save the trees.
Okay.
Hold on, anybody got questions for the applicant before we go to Natalie?
No.
Okay.
So I think Mr. Petrosini kind of covered, again, a lot of the substantial comments left over in our memo. We appreciate you offering to assist with the changes to the easement to accommodate the highway department. And really, I think what they're looking to do is construct an extension from the catch basin that we noted was outside of the easement area and maintained by the village now to, directly to Woodbury Creek through the unimproved parking lot. And it's surrounded by a fence, but I think it's not striped on the northern part of the parcel. So the idea would be to construct new drainage there and create another outfall. So we'll work with Mr. Petrosini on that. Phil's not here today, but he did mention that any striping and signage should be also coordinated with the highway department.
I did miss that. The stop sign at the end of Laurel Lane has been installed in coordination with the highway department.
Oh, okay, so that's good to know.
I think I rolled through that the other day.
Those new stop signs, I'm out of nowhere.
They had to put a sign up to say there was a new sign, they didn't put a new sign sign up.
I did want to just touch on the water usage. The applicant submitted some information on usage for a temporary location. They've also provided revised calculations using a unit rate multiplier based on the usage from that temporary location. So our memo notes some questions for the applicant related to that. You know, number one is, the operation at this temporary facility, if it transfers to a permanent facility, would the usage increase? Are there any things that they're basically restricted at this temporary location that could happen at the permanent location? And a really bad example is like an indoor pool, you know what I mean? You know, then also, we noted that they're basing the estimates or, you know, the unit rate based on three months' worth of data for the temporary location, but standards actually request or reply or recommend one year's worth of data. So if the applicant can't provide that one year's worth of data, then we would suggest they should go by the DEC's multiplier, which I think is twenty gallons per day per student. And the differences are pretty substantial. I think it would work out too, if there were sixty students, twelve-hundred gallons per day versus the usage based on the temporary location is somewhere around two-hundred gallons per day total for all the students. So, you know, we just would like some additional information to confirm that those numbers are correct and accurate, you know, to apply that to this permanent use. We've also asked for clarification on how many children are actually going to be at the facility, and I think the reason that, I think it's sixty, I think that's been discussed with the board a number of times. But originally, when the projected water and sewer demand form was filed with the board, those calculations were based on seventy-five students to accommodate growth. So presumably, the planning board, like it's done with other applications, will want to restrict the number of occupants as part of your action because you've considered how many occupants and what the required parking would be and the water and sewer. So the applicant should kind of clarify that for the record and be consistent with their submissions. If there are going to be changes to the demand from the original projected water and sewer submission, that form should be updated. And then we've also asked for, I think we've gotten data points for Nationwide Auto Parts for five different years during, I think it's February to May. We've just asked for the applicant to provide one full year's worth of data to see if there was any seasonal variation. So those are our comments on that issue, but I think ultimately, it comes down to that this applicant has to go before the village board for a waiver under the moratorium. Excuse me, regardless of what the increase is going to be, there is going to be an increase. So I think that that's the applicant's next step, all right? We're looking forward to getting the drainage report signed off that that's gonna be acceptable, you know, for the existing facilities that were approved in twenty-fifteen. The DEC record, yeah, we just, we're looking for a little more information just other than that that was, the spill, spill report was closed. You know, I thought the board would be interested to know what actions were actually conducted on the site, you know, as part of the cleanup operations. And then I think the rest of our comments were informational or minor, unless the board has any questions, that's all I have.
Questions for Natalie?
So regarding water.
That's gonna be the crux of this application, right?
It is. Procedurally, a question. I, our reading of the moratorium, if we are two-hundred gallons per day or less, then there is an exemption, but at two-hundred-and-one, then we have to go to the village board.
You still, you have to go to the village board to basically request it under that? And the village board has the ability to waive the fee or waive the public hearing based on that? Hold on, let me just check that.
There was a public hearing.
Yeah, upon a determination that the information provided is accurate, said property shall be eligible for a hardship waiver, the fee in the public hearing for which may be waived by the board of trustees. So you still have to go there and ask for it.
Separately, the moratorium talked about an exemption as opposed to a waiver.
This is the resolution, there wasn't a specific exemption for this application in the actual law. There's a resolution with these exemptions in that, in, it promulgated the regulations from there. But there's no direct exemptions, because otherwise, that would essentially be modifying the local law with a resolution, which you can't do. So the resolution was setting forth hardship waiver procedures and basically potential additional exemptions, but you still have to request them from the village board.
Okay.
So just submit a request in writing and the board can consider?
Kelly wrote it, yeah, Bill Gorman.
Yes. But they may.
What I had in mind when I wrote it was?
It was, yeah.
It'd be a little weird if this board could grant water exceptions and being, we don't control it.
It was the word exemption, it was exemption, it is, a waiver is discretionary, exemption is not.
Right, but the village board still has to grant it, we don't have the power to grant it.
Yeah.
Okay.
E should be, should be titled something different, I'm gonna call E cantaloupes from now on, just something totally different.
If we're going to the village board for water, is there any point in addressing water here?
Well, I think no matter what, whatever information you provide would be responsive to Natalie's request. Natalie would also be writing a memo to this board and to the board of trustees regarding the water usage.
Okay.
So my only thought would be, get in your request to the board of trustees as soon as possible, and, because if they do want a public hearing, that's another two weeks out and then a decision. So to move it along.
And this board can't take action until the village board grants it, either denies or grants an exception.
Okay.
At this point, you know, Natalie gave you your homework to finish up, you can get all that stuff done and in, but we can't act on anything till we hear back from the village board.
At this point in time, the moratorium is set to end in July, correct?
I, it's around there, yeah. But I feel very strongly that it's gonna be either a new moratorium in place or continued. I don't think there's any more continuations, so it might be a new one. A new one.
A new one.
Yeah. But we're getting there, there are, there is progress being made, so I feel positive.
So.
Usually, I'm not feeling as positive.
There's a lot of thought that says when something could happen within a year or two, you can't go two years, three years, four years.
I, I don't disagree, and the village board has been appropriately advised on that. However, what I thought could actually occur, every engineer is telling me it can't be, like I can't go out and dig a well in a day, apparently it takes a lot longer. But I'm not an engineer, so.
But did you stay in the Holiday Express?
I mean, I try and give my engineering advice, and then Natalie's like, no, that's wrong. So, so I try and stay in my lane, but they, they are aware of that, yeah.
All right, so we can give additional data for the existing water usage. I think that's more or less irrelevant, because they are completely moving out. So whatever use they had is gone.
For Nationwide.
Correct.
So I think, I understand why you say it's irrelevant, but if you are able to provide a full year's of temporary, of data for the temporary location, and you're basing the increase off of? Well, then you can't use that information.
So far, is just showing that their total usage would be lower than the twenty gallons per day. Not that it would be less than a two-hundred increase, the total is less than two-hundred.
Is there a legal requirement, because we can only give best data?
Well, no.
And best data?
Yeah, so it's, it's the DEC standards. DEC standards allow you to calculate or estimate basically water and sewer demand based on three different criteria.
Between a standard and a requirement, are you bound to that? Or can you, in the board's discretion, can they look at data and make a discretionary call that this is going to be? And I'm not saying this board is probably gonna be a town board, but a discretionary call that based upon what we have, the data, we're satisfied?
Yes, so the standards are in place to provide guidance to professionals as well as boards as far as good engineering practice and how these things should be followed. And again, the standards offer a unit rate multiplier per child. It's twenty gallons per day per user essentially for indoor recreation or whatever it is. So you can either use that, or you can base your calculations off of one full year's worth of water or sewer data. Those are the recommendations.
The question is more to Kelly, because my idea is a standard or guidance. It's not a dictate.
But if it's an industry standard, you have to have something to provide the information for. And I'm not sure that you want to use that one, because I think that that actually, okay, I'm gonna go into my engineering lane. I think that actually exceeds what you may even be permitted to get a waiver from, for. So I think what Natalie's trying to do is give you some advice that if you can provide that other information, you, based on your actual usage, you may be able to fit into that.
We may have to go to another facility completely.
If you have, I don't know, if you have another facility that you might be able to get water use from?
The reason this is all coming out, we can give you a full year's worth of data from the temporary location. The two quarters before, it was unoccupied, so it would make us look great, I'm sure. But we only have two of our quarters of usage in the facility.
You understand that it's not really about the location, it's about the use at that location.
But Natalie, haven't we in the past, I know we've done it with other applicants, that if they've had multiple facilities?
It would be a different facility.
We've had them pull the usages from other facilities, whether it was water or traffic.
So if you have another one, yes.
And I know this, this corporation has other facilities.
That would be okay.
I think that makes sense.
It is comparable size.
Right, exactly, and it should be just one full year's worth of data.
Well, if we break it down to a per-head value.
Yeah.
You could do the math, you could do the mathematics, take it to one hundred, make it down to sixty, like.
Right, but we, I mean, it's all gonna come down to, as long as Natalie accepts the information, we're giving you suggestions, that's what other applicants have done. They've used other facilities that are close to, to provide that guidance when they don't have it. So I know they have other locations, so.
So as we're getting to the end of this, as far as back and forth on the easement, I would just like to ask your permission on that, that issue, and then water documentation, to just deal directly with Natalie, and just making sure we're getting what they need.
That's fine.
I don't want to come back for four months on moving.
We're not gonna have you back until I hear back from the village board, because it's not, there's no point for you to come back.
Okay.
Until I hear back from the village board.
Could this board give a conditional approval on a claim, whatever is found in that? Could this board give a conditional approval on whatever is finally found?
No.
No, not one that's based on the water.
The best that this board could do is if they felt it, they could authorize the drafting of a resolution, but they couldn't make it conditional upon that. And I'm not saying to do it, I'm saying that's the only option.
Basically, we're left, what is if they get approved for the water exemption, correct?
Yes. And then the easement, but easements we can handle as part of land sign, which we've, which is typical practice.
I would say we draft.
Do I hear a motion?
Probably make a motion that we draft a resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Was that aye, I didn't hear you, I saw your move, aye, okay, so, all right, so, but it's going to, like I said, that will sit until we hear back from the village board.
Understood. Yep, so, that's your next step.
Yep.
All right.
So Joe, I will send you the draft a minute, once it's done.
It's not, I spoke to the village.
Whenever I get it, it'll be closer to when you're going to be back on the...
What's up?
Of the potential approval.
Yeah, well, 60 is what was, it was in their application, so 60 is what will be in the resolution, it will be in the resolution.
John's like, I've heard that.
That's everything they presented to us.
Because I would have the...
No.
Right, it hasn't impacted everything, so they're going to get capped at what they initially presented to us.
So they meet on the 25th, you'd have to get a channel request in. They usually solicit our opinion on the assumptions of the water.
I fear that's them, but they know who we are.
I don't go to every meeting.
I have...
Okay. Documentation with water, a letter requesting it, there's... Okay? Do you have any questions? Thanks, John, good to see you. You too. Sorry.
Have a good night.
All right.
Next item on the agenda, Timber Trail, ARB. Review and discuss documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation of proposed single-family dwellings located within a previously approved subdivision on Hala Court in Island Mills. Said properties known as the Village Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 237, Lots, Lot 2, Lot 5 through 11. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Larry Hartman from Hartman Design, representing the Timber Trail Development. Just a little bit of overview, this is a previously approved cul-de-sac with eight subdivision properties in it. It's located right off the 32, off, I believe, the main road is Timber, exactly, Timber And basically, this was approved in 2016. There was a change in approval, I believe in 2022, 2022, for a lot 8, which they already started building, lot 8, and the client who bought the, bought the development, wanted to do some changes, some hair for the ARB changes for, for the new houses. There is going to be three models, and they're gonna, one of the conditions of the original approvals was that you cannot have one house next to the other, it's going to have three models, and the three models, there's going to be a variety of colors for the additional seven properties. I did provide architectural plans, including floor plans, elevations, as well as 3D renderings, sizes for all the models, that, all the models are posing, as well as a bird's eye view of the entire project. As well as each model with the different colors, indicating exactly which model is going to be of which lot, so kind of not to have the same model next, one next to each other, as well as the same colors.
That was, yeah, that was actually the main question I had for you, so the way they're in the lot is what you're looking for approval, right? You're not going to get a, someone's going to come in and they want to change the colors and style of the home that's in the lot.
Correct.
Okay.
So again, unless the board wants us any changes, this is what is proposed for now.
No, I just wanted, I didn't know if it was like, you know, this is what Model A, B, and C, and then you're going to have, you're, when you get a prospective buyer, they're going to take one from column A, one from column B, one from column C.
Unless, unless they want me to go back to, unless they want to go back to the board.
That's what I'm saying, I want to make sure we're all on the same page here, because then you'll...
Yeah, that's understood.
Okay, cool. Before we go to Natalie, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, that was basically my concern.
Good, I guess, no, yes, no. Okay, Natalie?
Sure. Our memo notes that the plans submitted by the applicant require modest adjustments to the bulk tables for consistency with the prior approval for the subdivision. We've requested confirmation on the coverage calculations, and that those are based on the net lot area for each of the lots. We've noted that the heights of the structures require confirmation, our plans, the dimensions were blurry, so it, it wasn't legible. We've also noted in our memo certain conditions and considerations from the 2016 approval for the applicant, or for the planning board to consider. One of the larger, I think, comments that we have is the proposed homes range in size from 6,421 square feet to 6,778. What was previously approved was 2,900 to 3,200, so they are approximately 150% larger than what was approved previously. The building footprints are also changing, the scale of the plans indicate that they range up to 2,590 square foot approximately, where the prior approval was for homes that ranged from 1,440 to 2,060. So we've asked the applicant to confirm those calculations on the footprints for their future submission. Since the building sizes are changing, as well as the placement on the site, we've recommended that the applicant's engineers certify compliance with the previously approved SWIP. When you're developing a SWIP, the impervious coverage is used to develop the design for the post-construction stormwater management, so if there's going to be a significant increase, that should be considered by the board, you know, or at least again, confirmation that the stormwater management facilities that were developed will, you know, meet the needs of this larger development, if you will. The prior approval was for four-bedroom homes, and although the applicant's projected water and sewer demand form indicates that no new bedrooms are proposed, we've noted that the floor plans identify bonus rooms and music rooms and unfinished attic spaces, all that have closets, you know, so technically those could be considered bedrooms, I think that requires some discussion. And then the only other thing, I guess, as, from an ARB standpoint, we, you know, the code requires you to consider similarity and dissimilarity, you know, with, in a neighborhood, if you will. Lot 8 was previously approved, and then now you're looking at seven lots as part of the eight lots, so I mean, you would consider basically the similarity and dissimilarity amongst this proposal, that, that lot, and you could consider outside if you would choose. The applicant did provide a rendering for each home on each lot, so we had said that maybe it makes sense to just have an ARB form, you know, for each one of those homes per lot, but I understand that the board was kind of just discussing some flexibility for a future purchaser, you know, maybe that it wouldn't be designated to those lots. So I guess that's kind of to the board's discretion, I mean, would you prefer to have the options sort of listed on one form, or since you have renderings for each lot, just have them provide the ARB form for each one? Does that make sense?
No, it makes sense, and I think what Larry was looking for is that the homes that are rendered are the homes that we've built on the lots, from what I, you were saying, right, Larry?
Yeah, yeah, unless, I mean, if, I'm, I'll look for approval for that, if they want to change, they could always come back, but...
They can always come back.
So then an ARB form for each lot would be appropriate, I think.
Yep.
All right, and then we've noted that you could request material samples if you prefer to decide on the ARB, and then otherwise, a public hearing is required to be scheduled or waived as permitted by your code, and as always, we defer to Kelly on Seeker and GML referral.
So, questions for Natalie?
Yeah. How's July, you call up like that?
Yes, I, so, I did look at the approval documents, and I think it was consistent with the prior approval, I think the applicant represented at that time, that they weren't changing, you know, the footprint or the area, but I'd have to, I'd have to double-check for you.
Yes, I mean, my notes, I mean, I don't have the exact number, but it was a 2400 and this is the one where we had a lot of discussion about earth tone colors.
And the white, and, yeah.
And so my question is, if we add more houses, and we were very particular about earth tone colors, are we going to keep that decision for the remaining houses? Because it's part of timber ridge.
Right, so what you should be considering is that similarity and dissimilarity criteria in your code. You know, this is actually not subject to ridge preservation based on the elevations of the lots, although I think when you were looking at the home on Lot 8, all you had was the prior approval, which were homes that were light green and blue, and I can't remember, I think there was another model, maybe it was brown, to compare to this new, to what was on Lot 8 was going to be like a white, you know, or, you know, very similar to white color, and then timber ridge, which is brown and, you know, like a hard contrast brown, I think. So, you know, I think that's why that discussion was really well thought out, because of, you know, maybe just a white home next to blue, green, and a dark brown would be very dissimilar type of thing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, originally the applicant came in with a white house, and we asked a debate with dark brown, so I, I, I hope we're not going back to white for the remaining houses, coming back with a white tone.
So I think then, you, you know, the planning board should really consider the renderings that were provided by the applicant, and whether or not that is, you know, too similar or dissimilar to Lot 8, which is approved, and also the surrounding development.
And then if my assumption is correct, between 3,000 and 4,000, these new houses are a lot larger, so my concern is they're dissimilar with, with the ones that are built there now.
Right, and that is one of the requirements, or, you know, the standards set forth in the code for the planning board to consider, I think. I usually list it in the memo, so I can kind of just read that for you if you'd like. So when you're considering excessive similarity and dissimilarity or inappropriious, inappropriateness in relation to itself or to any other structure existing, or for which a permit has been issued, or to any other structure included in the same permit application, so again, that would be all seven lots together, and Lot 8, that are facing upon the same street or within the same or surrounding neighborhood, including neighboring developments, in respect to one or more of the following features, and then the code goes on to indicate the exterior facade of all building sides, including but not limited to the building materials, the mass, the roof line, the architectural style and authenticity, colors, size, proportion, roof design and height, and then as well as the size and arrangement of doors, windows, porticos, or other openings or breaks in the facade, including reverse arrangement, and then footprint and gross floor area, including all or persons of the structure. So those are the criteria, and the planning board should discuss whether or not, you know, they find it similar or dissimilar.
If I can, if I can jump in...
Maybe the ARB application.
Sorry. If I can jump in on the square footage, I took a look at the Lot 8. So basically, it was, it was a 30104, I believe, the square footage, but again, that's only the living space, and then they have a basement of another 15 and change. So when, if you compare living to living, space, again, this house is not going to be very off. I did put on each model the actual living space, for example, Model A is 3801, which is about 700 square feet off. The reason it says 6,000 is, 6,000 is by my, in these models include unfinished attics, every possible square footage, including basement. So if you want to compare apples to apples, it has to be compared Lot 8, including the unfinished basement and garage, or if you want to compare living space, you have to compare living space to living space, but the lot 8 has 3100 living space plus the additional 1504 basement, and mine, 6,100 includes everything, including the basement, including the garage, including everything. So when you compare apples to apples, these, these houses are not big, not as, so much bigger than the lot number 8, that's number one. When you do compare the area, so again, this is just one lot, Lot Number 8, compared to the rest of it, which is going to be seven additional lots, as well as the entire area. So if you look at this area, this whole development, on the bottom of it, next to the 32, has a commercial building of, it touches a lot of a commercial building of 10,000 square feet. Right across it, it has a multi, multifamily development, which each structure could be 7, 8,000, it has like four units in each. If you look at the back of it, it has the Sherwood development, also similar development, cul-de-sac. The houses range between 5 and 1/2 and 7,000 square feet. All of them, much, much bigger houses than, not all of them, but the majority of the houses are bigger, they're all within the same range that what we are proposing, it's either the same or bigger. So again, it's only the Lot 8 that is smaller, also, and again, 700 square feet smaller as well as from finished base, and about, if you include the basement and the garage, it's about 1,500 square feet bigger. So if you look at the entire area, including acres and acres around it, I'm not going to compare a, I'm not going to have a whole kitchen match a small teakettle, it's basically, it's just one lot, Lot 8, which if we have to, it's the same owner, he's in the middle of building it, he'll add a little piece if that one thing makes it smaller, but other than that, the entire area is basically everything, everything around it, and all four sides is much, much bigger than what we are proposing. So that, that is as far as square footage. As far as lot coverage, of course, we'll make sure that it doesn't have any additional previous areas for what we are proposing. Basically, the previous proposals had the garage on the side, so they have this long driveway going to the side of the house, this is going to have, these new houses propose on the front the garage, so just by removing that little driveway to the side of the house, it's basically going to take care, going to have the same, because as, as well as lot coverage, the houses, as well as footprint, are only about 400 square feet bigger. So we can just remove that...
400 square foot bigger to the, for the approval?
For the, these new houses versus, let's say, Lot 8.
Okay.
So basically, that reason it sounds so much is because, because they didn't count the, the unfinished basement, they didn't count the, the attic and all of that, which I did, so therefore the calculations, if you look at footprint, the footprint, as Natalie said, is about 400 square foot of a difference between what the biggest house from, what I'm proposing versus Lot 8, let's say. So there you can see, it's not that much bigger. So just by removing 400 square feet of...
How much bigger footprint is it from what was approved?
Then, Lot 8 is a previously approved, about 400.
Actual approval.
So basically, it's 2,060 to the, to the biggest house, 2,590, no, so it's about 500, 500 to 300.
Right, so our memo discusses the prior approval and the building footprints that were approved at that time, so the range was 1,440 to 2,060, and then a scale of the applicant's plans, which again, I, I think Larry should provide that in his next submission, indicates that they're between 2,400 and 2,600, so, you know, between, I mean, if you go from 1,440 to 2,600, you know, you're looking at 1,200 square feet bigger, you know?
Yeah, but you can't look at the smallest approved, on the previously approved, to the big, the biggest of that, but you have to look at the biggest, the biggest, smallest, the smallest.
Yeah, that's the largest.
So if you look at the biggest, the biggest, it's a, it's 500, it's 530 to be exact. Again, I'll, I'll, I'll put it, but according to your memo, 530.
And then I was also going to suggest, Larry, you know, you, I think you did a pretty good job describing other developments that, you know, have comparable homes to what you're offering, typically the board requests information on similar homes, and you know this.
Yeah.
So I think you should provide that analysis for your next submission.
I'll definitely do that, I, basically after I got these comments, I checked the surrounding areas, particularly the one development that basically touches this development, very similar development, also instead of eight lots of the original... Also, instead of eight lots of divisions, it's a thirteen lots of division, also cul-de-sac of the same street. And I quickly went on the, on the, on the, on the village's website, the county's, just looking at it, probably almost half of the houses is bigger than my biggest house. So, it's the same development, it's of the same street, same cul-de-sac type of development, same sizes of the lots and everything.
What this board, in my opinion, should focus on is not the livable square footage, because architect, our architect, the end get tellers, I can put six thousand square for living space in a three hundred foot home that's twelve feet wide, and the, the mass, the amount of lot it's going to take up is, you know, different. I think what we need to focus on is how much bigger of a footprint are these houses are going to be over what was originally approved. And what I knew was going to happen when the first house came in was.
It's going to go bigger.
Well, not, not about going bigger, that this was going to turn into, when the, when the other architect came in and wanted to get that house approved, and I'm like, we're doing one house. And I knew this was going to turn into something more, because now, they want to do seven houses at once. So, I think the other thing that's hanging out there, Larry, is the fifth bed, is the fifth bedroom. Or bonus room, because it's, it's, the building inspector has opined that if it's got a closet, it can be a bedroom. So, these were all originally four, four bedroom homes approved. So if you're gonna, if you're going to have closets in the room, technically, they can become a bedroom, which makes them five bedroom homes, which then kicks you into having to get potential water waiver.
I'm not, again, I'll, I'll take a look at that. I'll, I'll check again if it has closets, let me see. But I don't think, is this a previously approved? Would that be a problem? I don't think there's an, there's, there's an exception for previously approved subdivisions.
Not if you're, if you're adding.
I think that's only for new structures, if I remember well. For example, the WP three development.
But the previously approved subdivision was four bedroom homes.
Correct.
So now, this is going to be potential. While you only draw, drew four bedrooms on the plan, because the building inspector has opined that a room with the closet can be a bedroom, we have to look at it as a five bedroom home.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a.
So either take the closet out.
Take the closet out.
The closet, I'll take a look at it more in detail. But I, if I do remember well, the exception was, did not include any, if there's an additional bedroom.
Jeopardy music, Wyatt Kelly.
Applications for ARB approval for previously approved structures, including residential dwellings. If this is changing the structure, I would say that it's not a previously approved structure.
No, I'm talking about previously approved subdivisions.
No, it's going for previously approved subdivisions.
Exactly.
Hold on, hold on, I'm still reading.
No pressure.
But maybe it was changed. The original one, because we had a similar issue, again, when it was opposed a couple of years ago, the moratorium was also an issue, because it wasn't originally approved. The WP three didn't have a specific bedroom count.
I think that might have been the one for the gentleman who was just, it was a previously approved structure. He wasn't adding anything, but he was changing the layout and everything. But that was, because it didn't result in additional uses on a property or an increased use of water. So by adding an additional music room, it's a lot of the music rooms, I think, that have the closet. The building inspector says that's an additional bedroom. The additional bedroom makes it additional waters, then it doesn't fall into that exemption.
And, okay, I'll take a look at that. Either way, I'll take a look at that for bedroom, I'll take a look at that.
Take a look, it might be an easy change.
You should go back to your law degree.
Uh huh.
Go back to your law degree.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, so it's great. I don't, I would never argue something that I can't even read or, I can't even.
I, I said I'd look at it. I knew that Larry wasn't going to quote something that there wasn't, that he didn't read before, so.
I, I did remember having that, but again, either way, we'll take care of that.
So why were piling the homework on Larry? Designs of the homes, colors, what do we?
I think they, I mean, they feel very similar, even though, like, I had to really look at the rendering to see that they were actually different colors. I know they're different colors, but they just seem very similar to me.
I do want to hear a little bit of feedback about the colors. I'm pretty flexible with that.
Even the colors, like, what about, like, the stonework on them is all similar too, right? Is there any way to, instead of it being that, what's the technical name?
Danish?
No, the square, the straight, you know, maybe mix it up a little bit with something other than just.
Switch up, switch up the stonework on the houses.
Circles on one, squares on another.
Couple triangles.
This is why I work.
No.
This is why I work.
Not only that.
And not architectural design.
One of the, one of the things, it can be dissimilar that much, so it has to be in between.
Right, but it's got to be.
Similar and dissimilar.
Little bit of a difference. There's got to be a mix.
There's got to be a mix, so.
Get a little creative.
Boxes and circles is going to be a problem, I think.
Look at storyboard views.
Again, I'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, we can, once I think he determines.
Once we get the, the design down.
Because I think we got to change, I think it's got to change up a little bit.
I did try to keep at the same kind of model, where it has like more traditional type of home, with the, you know, gable roofs, everything, nothing, all three models. Again, I wanted to be unified as well. Colors, I hear, I mean, each model has, basically, it has the same three colors, but each model has the same three colors. So basically, there's three models, each having the same set of colors. But if you don't like that, have, let's say, different colors for each model, we'll do that as well. You can do that.
As far as the design of the houses, I mean, I'm okay with the actual designs.
I'm not worried about the, I'm not worried, the design of the house doesn't, doesn't, it's the, it's the finishes and the coloring is where, is where I'm at right now.
Okay.
Usually, I try not to go light, because it's part of the, the, also called ridge preservation. But this one, this one doesn't fall into it. And the original, and the lot eight that was approved also had, like, these similar colors, where the base was white and they were thrown, not white, light.
Trust us, it's not white.
Not white.
That guy came back five times.
Yeah, it's light, it's light. I kind of tried to match, where the basis, the base is a little lighter, and the accent thing's a little darker, kind of.
Maybe just a couple of different shades of darker and lighter.
Okay, we'll definitely do that.
So it doesn't look so similar.
I mean, like, when you look at the 3D, if you just looked at it quickly.
It looks like seven white houses. Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, just shade them up a little bit, you know, just a little, a little difference.
Yeah.
Would you have multiple choices for A model, and B model, and C model?
Well, I think what we're saying is, we're going to approve it, that's the way the model's going to be.
Yeah, we're going to approve.
The customer's not going to be able, I want this and this.
Unless they come back.
Unless they come back.
You'll have to, Larry, whenever this gets approved, when it's going to be, this is what's being built there, any changes from that are coming back again.
What I was saying.
Hopefully not.
If, take model A, and you have three different configurations for model A. If a customer chooses one, then that's off the board. Then the only other choices for model A are the two that weren't used. Or is that too complicated?
We, they tried that up in WP three, and that has turned into.
Chaos.
Nothing but a nightmare to try.
Model A is going to be model A.
Yeah.
Model B is going to be model A.
I think I should, this is a better approach to go with that. This is, this is what the building, this is what they're going to look like, and.
And they can't be next to each other.
They can't be next to each other, yeah.
Correct.
As they say in sales, don't look at the consumer's choices.
That's why, that's why I did a Pacific house or Pacific lot.
You can't do anything by stone, come on.
Huh?
You can click your mouse and change the stone, I know you can.
We, I definitely will do it. Definitely will do it.
Because we've seen you do it before in other projects you give.
Again, I, I did try a little bit to match with the eight, and that's a little bit, but if you definitely, I can, I can see, I can see what you're saying.
Put triangles in the front of the house or parallelograms, but.
Yeah.
Little color change, little, little, little color shade change.
Yeah.
Evan's like, please, no triangles.
Sorry, it's late, I'm getting punchy. What else? Anything else we want to send Larry away with?
I think those are the two major things, a little stonework, a little color.
Other than the clarifying the bedroom.
Yeah. Definitely bedroom, and obviously, doing the comparison of the area and showing that it's.
Right, but don't, you know, don't go pick a, a home that's three miles down the road and say it's similar to this neighborhood either.
Let's, if we could clarify that, this pink is the development.
Right.
These obviously right across are much bigger, because they're multifamily, okay?
Yeah, those are townhouses.
Those are townhouses. So it's obviously, I'm not going to be able to compare it to this. This one over here is a commercial building.
No, we're giving you some.
So, so this is, this is the next development, right off the same street.
And we're giving you some leeway. We, we understand that, we're just saying, don't go.
Correct, correct. So I'm, I'm basically going to do this, this development. I mean, that's the only one, all of the others are just way bigger. It's, it's not even, not even to compare. So again, I'll, I'll do a couple of houses of this, this next door development, just to make sure it's.
Yeah, but it just shows a couple of different color shades.
And as well as.
A little bit different, a little bit different on the stone.
Yeah.
I'm curious, the house that's in there.
Which one?
The only house.
Lot eight, okay.
If the garage is underneath.
Yeah.
And the front is very different than your model's, wouldn't it be homie to have something similar?
Again, I.
If you're changing from the lot eight design, to me, it's very dissimilar to make them all the same versus what you have there, versus maybe having one or two of these, just with different colors.
Again, as I said, I'm not going to try to match one lot, which I believe, I believe lot eight doesn't belong there compared to whatever is the surrounding. It's the same, the same, the same.
So similar.
Correct. The main reason we're changing, taking away the garage from the basement. It's very hard, as you can see, having the garage in the basement, having the driveway going down. So basically, the, one of the biggest changes is having the garage taken away from the basement and putting it, all of these models have like a little garage that makes it look very homie. Another thing over there with the lot eight, it's, I wouldn't say modern, but it's more like, doesn't have this homie look with multiple, multiple roof levels and think of, people don't like that. It depends where you're more in, different areas where they like this rigid man, kind of. This is the one, the, our models have more like split roofs, and more like homie front porch, that kind of look. So, owner doesn't want to match lot eight versus the whole area, and we're going to have seven houses. I mean, it's not totally dissimilar. The width, for example, is staying almost the same. We're kind of keeping it, if we would have put one picture next to each other, you wouldn't even realize that it's bigger one from the other, because lot number eight, if you take a look at it, I should have brought a, it's very rigid, two stories tall, the entire building, from side to side, has that bulky look, which.
Maybe if the next time you come, you do bring it around, they're going to.
And I'll, I'll have a lot eight versus, versus the rest of it.
We already, lot eight, we already approved. We went from twenty-six hundred to thirty-one hundred for this lot. And we're going higher for the remaining seven.
I, I don't think they changed it. Lot eight wasn't, when they came twenty-twenty-two, they didn't change the footprint. It was.
What I'm saying is, the original was fourteen hundred and twenty-six.
Yeah.
And we approved it at thirty-one hundred for this one.
I think the original was from fourteen hundred to, no.
Twenty-six, twenty-six hundred. We just said it, and Natalie just said it.
I believe that, that's the footprint. But the square footage, the footprint.
Twenty sixty.
Twenty sixty. And this one is.
We moved it up to thirty-one hundred for the lot eight.
No, no, thirty-one is the, not the footprint, thirty-one is the square footage, the living square footage.
Two different things, you got the footprint and the livable square footage.
Livable square footage. So the livable square footage, lot eight stayed the same. They came, they just changed the facade to stucco and different. It stayed the same as, I'm not sure about the footprint. I think the footprint is, I wouldn't know the footprint, but I know the square footage is thirty-one oh four, the living, and then a basement of fifteen oh four, that I checked.
And I think Tommy's suggestion about including lot eight as a comparable home with the building footprint.
Yeah, with the footprint also.
You know, gross floor area.
Yeah, I'll do that. Again, obviously, lot eight is going to be a little bit, is going to be smaller.
We just want to see how much of a difference.
Difference it is, yeah.
Since we, we went from an approval, up to.
Not a problem. And I also have a comparable, like, right next to each other, as well as 3D versus 3D.
I don't think we have, I don't think.
I don't think we changed the size of that house.
Well, that's what we need to say.
I'm pretty sure we didn't.
I don't think, I don't think the footprint changed, the square footage.
So would it be helpful if Larry took the footprint of lot eight and then superimposed it on top of lots one through seven?
To see the difference?
To see the difference. Kind of like what we just did.
Yeah, I think we definitely need, you know, everything with lot eight.
You understand what I'm asking for, Larry?
What is that?
Take, take your, just take the square of what your building's going, your seven lots, right?
Yeah.
What size it's going to take on the lot.
Yeah.
And just take lot eight, and just take a different, drop it on your square.
All right.
Does that make sense?
To do that, I think that's pretty easy.
You've done it before, so I think you can do it here.
I, I should be able to handle that.
Okay.
But then it's just for the three different models.
What's up?
They would only be for the three different models.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, if we're, if we're focusing, focusing on.
Seven lots.
Seven lots, and where everybody's focusing on eight, this will give the board a good idea of, in comparison to eight, how each one of the models relates to that. Kind of like what we just did with the other house, where we drew the, had them draw the, the extension of the house over just to kind of see how big.
Right.
Anything else?
Like Chris says, I think you got your homework.
You're good as far as what homework on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll definitely come back with all the information.
Don't go anywhere. Who's your next? Okay, next and final item on the agenda. Hartman ARB, Sixty Southfield. Review documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation. A proposed addition to a single-family dwelling said properties located Sixty Southfield Falls, and is known as the Village of Woodbury. Cat map section two-two-six, block one, lot ninety-one. I know there was just, I think it was, this was just like some cleanup work, you know, right, Natalie?
Yeah, I think we only had one comment really for plan changes, and that's just to confirm consistency of the size of all the additions, you know, amongst the materials. But that can definitely be handled as part of the plan signing process, and I think Kelly's prepared a draft resolution for you to consider, so.
We do. If I remember, we didn't take much exception when this was in front of us last time, right? Any other questions for the applicant? All right, so I'll just go to.
Yep.
So, once again, after several pages of facts and findings, we get to, hold on.[1692.32]